Good afternoon, welcome to the Spaulding Board Commissioners Work Session. It is June 3rd, 2024, and time is 3:00 PM. Please silence your cell phones and all of them, all of the electronic devices. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the invocation, I'm sorry, and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the Pledge of Light.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, please give us the wisdom to make the right choices that affect citizens in Spaulding County. Please put a shield, a shield of safety over our public safety officers, firefighters, military during these trying times. And please say a little prayer for our county manager, Steve Ledbetter, to get well soon. We need him back ASAP. In his heavenly name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Today is a workshop on, in preparation for a budget vote. That will happen on, first one on the 17th of June, and then the second one on the 20th of June, for the final reading on the 20th of June. Today, the purpose really and truly is for us, the Commissioners, to talk our way through any discrepancies or anything that we are concerned about. So you will hear us today saying, "No, I don't agree with that," or "Yes," or "I don't want to think so more about things like that." I see it working in two parts. The budget, so everybody understands, is here. That's what our annual budget looks like. And then discussion on pay-as-you-go items that we're going to talk about a little bit more. Right now, I see the Steve's, the staff's budget request to be, I'm okay with, I guess is the best way, and I'm ready to approve on 17 June. If there is something on the budget we need to talk about it, but I'm good with the budget. We'll talk about supplementals and things like that a little bit further back. Any issues with the budget as far as you're too concerned?
Is there any way we can have, and I'm not putting on the stud point if you, you know, but a quick synopsis of the budget, meaning where we are as far as the dollar amount and everything, and just, just very quickly? I'm talking two or three minutes, if you can. Just so everybody has an understanding.
Yeah, that does give us a second. The county manager is not here, and our wonderful financial manager is here to talk to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As of right now, the proposed budget for FY '25 is at $70,100,000. We are still working with HR to make sure that we have all the correct amounts for the new pay study, but as of right now, we are at $70,100,000.
Correct.
Okay. My idea for the other items, supplementals and things like that, is that we will first and foremost hold those off, pay for those as we go, as we get money in. Right now, the June, July, August timeframe for us, even into September, we have almost no revenue coming in. We've got bills going out, but no revenue. So I want to hold as many, much, hold as much money as we can into the fund balance and then pay as we go along, as we get further down. Now, there will be some things in the supplemental that we will have to pay for immediately, but those items I want Steve to bring to us one at a time. When he's ready for them, he's got funding figured out, he will bring those forth, and we will approve those as we go along. I've spent time looking at the supplemental list and working it. I'm pleased with where we are with them. I don't have any major issues. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor and I went through it together and changed some numbers around, but in the end, the bottom line number for the supplementals is something we can look at as we go through to be able to find.
Yeah, I got an opportunity to spend some time with the county manager and also got a chance to kind of go through the supplemental list. And just understanding that, like I said, the items of priority will be the items that come first.
Yes, yes. And so if we need money, we're going to start at the bottom and work our way back up to be able to do that. From a policy perspective, first, we set the balanced budget at $15,588. So there's no question about that's the same thing we have as a mileage rate right now. Our budget, as I've said, is based off of that. Secondly, is that from a policy perspective, I want to have at least 90 days of fund balance at all the time to be able to do that. We know how important that is when we went through with the tornado and everything else, so we've got to be able to do that. And that's part of my rationale for, reasoning for being able to put money into the fund balance and hold it there until it's time for those issues on the supplemental to be able to do them. So Monday, I mean, on the 17th, I see no issues that I know of from us approving the budget. Supplementals are different issues and all the other things, and we'll talk our way through those, which is the most of what I think is the majority of the conversation. All right, we all square on that part? All right, let's just kind of go through these as we walk our way through. The Aquatic Center, entrance fee specifically. We have money in the budget for the Aquatic Center to be able to do, get by with the Aquatic Center, do the M&amp;O. Now, the plan was that we'd have a management group come in and run that. Their recommendation through the Park and Leisure Advisory Group was $6 for children and seniors, and then $8 in between. I would like to talk, have us talk about doing it a different way for the first year. My belief is that children who are accompanied full-time by parents, grandparents, already and I don't know the right words to be able to do that, should be able to come in for $1 or $2 or something like that. So I'm trying to get people in, I'm trying to get kids to go, be able to go to the pool. So first and foremost, I'd like to be able to see if we can do that. We'll turn that whole issue on the money side over to the county manager to figure out the exact wording. I want to have a note, a sign on the door that says, "Next year, the funds will change, but this year, we'll start off with us, for want of a better term, supplementing that to be able to get that whole thing working the way we want to." We want to get kids, children there, but I don't want children to be just 10 or 12 kids running over there and doing it at one time. I believe parents, if the kids are coming in onesies and twosies, then I think that they can go ahead and pay the different fee.
Okay, may I jump in? Have we, have we thought about an idea of maybe of a family plan or something like that to offer up?
And that, that works for me. Commissioner Duncan talked to me about a fairly inexpensive yearly pass and allow people to maybe pay it off monthly or something like that. And then say it, we can get them in there, and they can do it for much less cost than it would be for three or four months or something like that. But what we're trying to do is get it to a cost that people can afford to get to it, to be able to do that. So if you don't like that idea, my intent is to have Erica take it to Steve, let PLA-C work it, Parks and Leisure Services and people work that, come back to us with the legal wording to be able to say, "This is what we're going to do to get kids in there with parents. Parents, guardians can't leave."
Right. And that's, and that's a big plus for me because, like, being past law enforcement, I worked a lot of part-time jobs, like movie theaters and skating rinks, and parents would bring kids out and just drop them off, and next thing you know, you've got probably 35 or 40 kids by themselves, and that's, and it's the same, it was always the same kids every week. They'd fight, I mean, it was just a mess. And I think some adult supervision by parents would be, be a benefit.
And we can talk about the ages that we think the kids are, up to, my thought is less than driving age. So the kids that are up to 15. Now, some places, we have 12-year-olds are, is a top place, but somewhere in there, children getting into the pool to be able to do this.
Sure. Yeah, may I jump in a quick? I know that the, we have the pool management folks are going to be obviously involved in some of this, and they're going to be over the concessions, all right? As far as concession prices and things like that? Do we know? As far as I'm thinking, ways of actually generating more of an income, you know, that would actually kind of help with some of these costs. I don't know if that's been built, are they built into this or no?
Right, Commissioner, there's no concessions in that building.
No, so there won't be?
There'll be room for two men, I would say.
Okay.
Okay, and so this is us, let's make sure we're talking hardcore language, us supplementing this for the first year to get this thing started and get people to the pool. After that, the second year may look totally different. We may go back to the $6 and $8 for everybody and do stuff like that, but the first year, let's get everybody into the pool and get an opportunity to see it. So if you don't like that, we'll talk about it between now and whenever we start the pool.
All right.
The second one is transportation to the pool. The pool is at Lexington Valley. That's a long way for most of the younger kids, eight to 10, 12-year-olds, to be able to get there. If we're not going to allow them to just moms and dads drop them off at reduced cost, we're going to have to figure out how to do transportation. Some are, some of the Commissioners are, transportation is not our business, we don't need to get into it. But we've got to figure out some way to be able to do that. I think that the county manager is talking to Three Rivers, and Three Rivers has an idea of how to do that, and if we, I think the cost would be okay with us, and we don't get into the maintenance and operations of doing that, we just give them the money they set up and maybe even set it up so that it is just for the summer months, and we stop it in October or something like that, or we set it up full-time to be able to start doing dedicated run from place to place to place out to the pool to be able to do that. So I'm, I'm okay with that. We'll let the county manager come back and tell us how much it costs, and at that time, we'll decide whether we're going to try to do something with it or not. And the concept is, is good with I.B. to be able to do it. And maybe some people inside the town, in the county, that have some options to be able to help us with that.
Did we ever check with the school system on there too, or are they, or is he, it's solely, they're about three or four?
That's what I want to see. There's a couple others that have semi-small buses that we could set up to be able to do that with.
All right.
Next is gym funding. We have a gymnasium that we're hoping to be able to keep the outside. Doesn't look like we're going to be able to do that from what I understand. Looks like we're going to have to tear it all the way down and rebuild. It is not in the exact budget that we have right now to be able to do it. It's big money, but once again, this is pay-as-you-go as we figure out. I think the order of magnitude is $4 million for it, which is a big sum for us, but if we look at it, and when Steve has the numbers all worked out, he brings it back to us. The community, I believe, thinks we owe to them, and so I think we need to take a hard look at being able to get that money to be able to do it. So it's on my priority list to be able to vote yes or no on it, to be able to see if we can do it. If we can't do it, then can we talk to partnership with some other people to be able to do some stuff so that we can do this?
This serves as a reminder that this is our, was a SPOLOST project. It is the last SPOLOST project, and if we ever want to decide on doing another, or if you all decide to do another future SPOLOST project, then you may want to consider getting this one taken care of.
Great point, yes. We have to hold faith. So next is curbside pickup. My thoughts on curbside pickup, this is a true, LaGrange did it. They, in a vote of three to two, decided to do curbside pickup. It was tough for the first week or two or three, and then it has been very, very good since then. Their county is better looking now after about a year of doing it. It is a million dollars to be able to do it. If you remember, we set up a RFQ, I think it was, or RFP, to be, excuse me, to be able to set this thing up? The RFP included keeping at least two centers open that people could take their stuff to, whether we charge them for it or not, that is a different issue. Do we want $1.2 million into our budget? When we brought it up last time, there was a number of citizens who came forward and said, "I am not for this." So, but it is a, it's an opportunity for us to talk about revenue generation by doing it. I believe that 50%, this is just my belief, I'll make up a number, 50% of our county is already having curbside pickup around somewhere. My home is in Sun City, and we're all doing it. I think almost everybody in the city of Griffin is doing it, so I think there's a number of people already doing it. But it's a decision we have to make. Under almost no circumstances do I see us starting this if we decided to do this before January. It'll take us that long to get the RFP back out, get it back into us, and then turn around and start to do it. But my key issue with it is really and truly those that want to continue to take their trash to a center, they can do that because we'll, the company that gets it will maintain those two centers, and we can do bulk items if we want to be able to do it. So it'll be an increase in capability. There's lots of issues with it, so I know that...
Personally, I know historically Commissioner Bolden and my district both have had, you know, where a lot of the people actually come out and have disapproved of this change. I think this still is going to take lots of education. You know, I just think that the way this kind of started out and the way it is now, you know, people are going to feel like that we have pulled the rug up under them. I don't feel comfortable actually doing this right now in the next six months, so you'll know. I'm interested in learning more about it, just like I'm sure the citizens are. But I can appreciate the fact that you're saying that it would not be something that would be handled immediately, let me say that. More education involved.
And I think that if we want to try to do this in the, this FY coming up, we could talk about starting in January, see how many people this would really affect that would have to pay money, and maybe we turn around, just like we do with the swimming pool, to get it started, supplement some of those people to be able to do it. But I understand this is a lightning rod issue with our community. If we're going to do it, we're going to have to do a lot of talking among ourselves and agreeing that this is the way we want to go in our county.
Yeah, maybe a situation where we don't do it this fiscal year budget, and maybe one that you may want to consider in the future budget.
No, I agree. The issue is, we need to talk through this and decide, and we don't have to do this on the 17th. This is after that issue. One of the issues we have in the county is homeless, and I want to do a homeless reduction, for want of a better term. I want to try to reduce the homeless people that are in our county. Some of the homeless people in our county are happy to do, be homeless. They are, they aren't looking for homes. They're happy with living outside and everything else, but some of them need help. And so I want to be able to talk about trying to pull some of the people in and give them an opportunity to, for want of a better, transition from living under, living out homeless to an opportunity to get into a place that we can provide for them. For specifically, the first bite I want to make is off of veterans. Veterans have a tough time getting some of the stuff from VA if they don't have an address. If we can get them in the process and get them an address, then we can start the process of them being able to get money for rent, get money for doing things like that. So we've got to, but we've got to get them in there. So I want to start with taking a small bite out of this apple. It is a nationwide issue. Almost all cities have this issue going on, and I want to try to do what we can inside of our county to be able to take the first bite, will take care of veterans and that group, because I know what that group is about and the common values that they have, and be able to start something. And I know that they can get supplemental income from the VA to be able to get them back on track to be able to do that. So if there's a big fight on it, I'm talking about it, but I think we'll, more to follow what it looks like and how big it is and everything else, but we'll work.
Is there more of an issue in the city versus the county, or is it just pretty much that's, I mean, as far as the homeless?
I don't know the difference between city and county people in there. I believe a lot, a number of people are from outside our county that have moved here. I've been driven in here to be able to do it because of our kindness to them, for want of a better term. But I don't know that they had a home here and then they would be homeless to be able to do that. So I'm hoping, I'm working hard with the chamber, the military chairs in the chamber, to be able to do that, and they're helping structure a whole bunch, and Waypoint is deeply involved in us to be able to do this.
And so we've got a lot of homeless camps, and probably the majority of them are in the county.
Okay.
Right off East McIntosh, got them up at Race Track behind Walmart.
I'm sorry, if your question was, where are they?
Yes.
Essentially, they're in the county.
Okay.
Under the brick, you know, that's, yes. My next issue is supplemental list. I think we've seen the supplemental, all of us have gone through it, and like you said, started at the bottom, work our way back up, the prioritized to be able to do it. Some of them can wait till January, some of them can wait even longer than that. Some of them can't wait at all, so we'll have to take care of them, but those will be separate issues that we will deal with when the time comes. But the list is okay with me for the most part. I'm not fighting the list. I'm not in here to say, "Take this off, take that off, add this one." For the most part, I think that Erica has been working hard to listen to us and listen to the staff and put them together so that they come out in a decent order.
Can I ask Erica a question, not to get into the weeds of this, but I noticed that there's one that's highlighted. Is that just, is it highlighted for a reason? Where he's talking about the parks, particularly City Park?
This is in Naturscape. TJ, you want to step forward?
I just noticed it was highlighted. I didn't know there was something that stuck out.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why it was highlighted. Did you highlight that for somebody? Naturscape? Okay.
Okay.
TJ?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I'm not familiar why it's highlighted either, but what it is, is y'all asked a couple months ago to bid out the lawn cutting portion of City Park. Those bids came in last Friday. We had bids that ranged from $37,000 to $189,000. So it would be my recommendation to recommend to county manager that we accept the lowest bid of $37,000, use that as a trial for this year. If I'm able to do that, I'll be able to reduce a lot of the equipment that's on the supplemental list because we would be able to then utilize what we have in the aquatic center list.
That's a big deal. I mean, for able to...
And so you know, that company is also the company that takes care of Sun City, where I live, and has been doing it for 10 years, I would say, to be able to do that. So they have the capability and they have demonstrated to be able to do that kind of stuff.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, TJ, you're saying if we were to incorporate this, which I think is a good idea, some of the items on here with some of your equipment may be taken off of this list?
Yes, ma'am, it'd be approximately $88,000 worth of equipment. It'd be a position and a vehicle, so it'd be just $200,000.
If I may interject, we've already taken those items off the list. That's why the landscape plan is highlighted, because we've already taken all those items off the list and just added the $32,000 for the contract for the City Park.
Okay.
So it was almost $200,000 savings.
And if you remember, we started the supplemental list with $2 or $3 million, and it's down to three-quarters of a million now, I'm sorry, as I look and see it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The supplemental budget was at $3.7 million to begin with.
Okay, so it's getting right on down there to real ones.
Mr. Chairman, I think you might want to reconsider election build-out. Election security is a very, very important issue, and I don't, I think it needs to be appropriately addressed in your supplemental budget as well. We can discuss the myriad of reasons why, but it's very important and necessary.
I agree. I tell you, you're going to come here?
Is that still in here?
I believe that the county manager agrees also, and is working two or three plans to be able to do that one way or the other. So we think that it will be done some way. So yes, but thank you. We've got to do something in answer. All right. My next issue is possibility of another SPOLOST. We're talking about next year, doing the possible, possibility of having a SPOLOST. What would that look like? Now, that's a long ways away, and the reason I'm bringing it up is not to get us talking about it and arguing and all that stuff, but the issue is, there may be some issues that we want to go to the citizens about and say, "Hey, we need help here to be able to do this." So if you've got thoughts on SPOLOST, yes, no, or items on SPOLOST, I'd be interested in hearing them, all of us talk about them to be able to do. This has got nothing to do with the 17, but this is just, this workshop is about us talking to each other and be able to say what we think. Comments? Okay.
Not that we just need to complete our previous SPOLOST, and then we, I'm sure that will open the door for a future SPOLOST.
Okay, yes, thank you. On the, we've been working, so everybody understands, we have a opioid problem, taking care of our citizens for a while. A number of companies were sued. We got in the midst, I'm probably going to say this all wrong, in the midst of a number of class action suits that were done. Those class action suits are resulting in money coming into us for the last couple of years. We're at approximately $200,000. I'm looking at you to see if that's order of magnitude, $200,000 in that time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that we've got. It is very specific in what we can and can't do with it. It is to take care of the money, basically to take care of the money we spent taking care of citizens who had an opioid addiction problem, so we can't just walk out and give them the money to somebody else. We're going to distribute that money out. There are a couple places for it to go. I'm going to suggest that the, that we get that money out. We will probably continue to get money in, but $200,000 is sitting in our, that we need to get to the people who took care of our citizens, and truly, there's very few of, very few places that it can go. It can go into, the first place we've put money with it was Narcan Distribution to the sheriff. We'll probably make sure we take care of that again first, and then the money that's left over, I want to push it on out to the people who really should go to. I don't want to get into a big fight over which organization, but I want to get it out of here, and $200,000 can make a huge difference in some of these places that have done such good work for our citizens and got them back on the road health-wise. All right. Now, that's my list. If you all have stuff we need to talk about, this is the time for us to talk. I'm, so you know, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor and I talked this morning and have talked a number of times. a number of times. I believe she and I are pretty well in sync on where we're trying to go and what the issues are we're trying to do. So I, I know her position. I've talked to Commissioner Dutton, and he's, for the most part, in sync with what we're trying to do. The big issue today to make sure we're all squared away on is, one, on the seventeenth, we're going to approve just that, those two books. And we'll start the process of pay-as-you-go, pulling money out of the budget as it comes in, to pay for the stuff that's on the supplemental or the gym or aquatic center and things like that. Okay? All right, we'll start with Commissioner Johnson?
No, I think I got a chance to look through your, the list of priorities here that we just hit on. I do agree that these are the top eight, that we do need to tackle sooner than later to count around at our year. These are some hot ones and ones that we need to wrap ourselves around, particularly the aquatic center, which is coming in now. It is the summertime and people want to swim, so I think we need to kind of tackle that one first.
Yep, yes, thank you, all right.
I also agree with a lot of yours. There's one on here that is, it's a no-brainer, and that's with the Peace Officer Annuity with the Correction Institute. We should, we should have started that yesterday. I mean, because the young folks don't realize the importance of it, a lot of young folks, they see that twenty, forty, I don't know what it is now, a month, and they say, "Well, I'd rather go spend that on food, but it'll pay you in the long run." So that's...
Yep, all right, I'm very pleased with the way we have been able to do the pay study and get that done. That was tight money for us, and we were able to get that so that we have the money now, and we'll have the money to be able to do it. We will have to watch FY twenty-six when we go into next year's budget, not this one we're looking at now, but the next year's budget, to make sure that there's money there, and that's a high priority for us. So we've got to continue to make sure that this is about, so everybody understands, this is about compression. This is not about pay raises, this is about compression. We have, what we have done is move the new hire money up, and move the new hire money up, and move the new hire money up so that people who are at the top, in the middle of the business, aren't getting what they should be getting. And so the compression money moves everybody to where they should be in, according to their skill and according to their longevity, loyalty pay, we call it, to be able to do it. So this was a big step for us. It cost us a lot of money, three million-plus dollars that we had to find out of thin air, for want of a better term, without raising the budget, which is, we have not done. So that was a big issue for us, and I'm very, very pleased that we were able to make this happen, and Ms. Di was great at making it all come together for us. Okay? Do you have a comment you would like, I'm running through. Any comments on the budget or what we've talked about?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, Artie?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, we have a number of staff here. If you don't like what you're hearing us talk about, please don't hesitate to work your way up to Steve to get to us and say, "This is how we see it." Our idea, I'll say again, is take all the supplemental, all the other things, and hold those, put those a pay-as-you-go, not try to stick them into the budget this year, and as money comes in from taxes and stuff like that, then we will start paying those off as, and we prioritize those to be able to do it. So it doesn't need to go into the budget right now to be able to, we've pretty well had a lot of red pencils out and redlined a lot of things to get us to where we are. Okay, any other comments?
None, sir.
All right, do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Three. We're adjourned. All right, you folks out there, if you want to come running up to the acting county manager and grab hold of her?